Hi, if you're just tuning in, tonight is the Board of Finance Public Hearing on the 2122 municipal budget. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you are joining us and you would like a chance to speak tonight, you can do so by using the Raise Your Hand feature on the Zoom call. If you're watching us on Facebook, you'll need to go to the website, the town website, and click on the Zoom link to join the meeting by Zoom in order to raise your hand to participate. I will take the raised hands in order that they appear. And when I call, you'll be admitted to the panelists to be able to speak. I'm just watching them come in right now. We currently have 35 attendees and two hands raised. We will limit speakers to about three minutes, depending on how many people wish to speak. And if you don't get a chance to finish your comments and we run through the list, I'll invite anybody back who wishes a second to finish. So we'll begin, oh, the Board of Finance members are on the call this evening, as well as the Town Council Finance Committee. They will not respond to your comments this evening. If anybody wishes to email comments directly to the board, you can do so through pcollier, C-O-L-L-I-E-R, at trumbull-ct.gov or directly to me, lanymcq@gmail.com. We'll begin this evening with Joseph Martini Jr.
Hi. So I am here tonight to speak about the...
Yeah, you are.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
My Zoom wasn't showing the correct display. It was only showing the speaker at the time. So I'm here tonight to talk about the budget, obviously, the Board of Ed budget. I'm in favor of the superintendent and the Board of Ed's proposed numbers. I'm the PAC Committee Chair for Cub Scout PAC number 164 out of Tashua School. And after what happened last year, obviously, we know that, you know, the world has sort of gone to, you know, crazy thing when it comes to financials and what we can do during these circumstances. But we lost our ability to meet at Tashua School last year before the pandemic because of the budget changes. And, you know, I think the schools are really like why everybody's coming to Trumbull. And I just hate to see that the schools be forced to take harder, make harder choices when it comes to what they can and will pay for. So, you know, I know as a, certainly as an organization that's connected to the schools, we're feeling the hit of what happened with the budget already. Besides the fact that there's a pandemic and we couldn't collect inside and whatnot, but despite that, we weren't able to stay in the schools past 4:30. So that's kind of where I'm at on this issue is I just, I think that the, with the new superintendent, I've loved the direct communication that we've gotten from him. And I just think that like what, what they're proposing is the best for the kids that are going to school in town here. That's all I really needed to say.
Thank you very much. I do have that, that you're with PAC 164. Would you just mind stating your address for the...
I live at 16 Solar Ridge Road in Trumbull, Connecticut, 06611.
Thank you, Mr. Martini. I appreciate you taking your time tonight. The next two speakers will be Cindy Pankoff and then JR Brea.
Okay, everything went very quiet. Can you hear me?
Yeah, all set, Cindy.
Thank you. I'm going to attempt to make this as simple as possible, and I did send you all a copy of this prayer too.
Can you just state your address for Phyllis?
Sorry, 101 Columbine Drive. "This might be the first time ever I have advocated for the Board of Ed budget to be fully funded as requested, and I no longer have any children in the school system. The reason being Martin Semel, our new superintendent of schools. I've watched every single presentation and question and answer meeting he has spoken at, and he has done exactly what we have been asking of the Board of Education for years, a transparent budget that was built from the ground up. Shocking that I have been in town for 20 years and it took this long for this type of honesty and managed to explain it all in a manner that everyone could understand. Not only is he honest about what he was presented with and what it will take to fix it, but he's addressing the concerns of an audit while still staying below a 4% request. To me, this is remarkable. As someone who sat on the Board of Finance and on the Town Council, I'm absolutely shocked by what he was able to accomplish with this budget. It's really incredible in his first budget season, especially since we have an administration that isn't even trying to be transparent, in my opinion. More money is being taken out of the general fund and a garbage tax that they trashed in 2017 when attended by the Herbst administration. Seriously, do they expect for us to all forget about that? In 2017, according to Anthony Musto, Vicki voted against the budget because of the trash tax as a way of raising revenue. Now, all of a sudden, it's supposed to be okay. And who exactly is going to be paying for that? The residents of the town, because that tax, that tipping fee, will be passed down to each one of us. This administration also spent months reminding people of their stance on the form of administration's use of the general fund, calling it a fake budget. This is now the second year the Tesoro administration has done this, each time in an attempt to hub short changes throughout budget, but mostly to education, all while accomplishing nothing new in our town. Nearly four years in and nothing new, except for the fact that we spent $7 million on a block of land to block development. This is a dishonest budget. Backdoor taxes, robbing the general fund, shortchanging education, and not one school upgrade or senior center in sight. Trumbull deserves better than this. Thank you."
Next, we're going to go to JR Brea, and then I see Anthony Scat Churchill, and he'll be following JR Brea. JR? You just gotta, it's taking a second to unmute.
Oh, I know.
There you go. Thank you for your email today. I did make sure that the whole board has read it.
Great, thanks. So it's a touch of some of the points on JR Brea. I live at 11 Cornfield Road in Trumbull. My family has a longstanding history in the town. The father's had a business that serviced the town since 1982. My grandmother's the original Marie from Marie Sandwich Shop. You know, so we've had small businesses within the town or servicing the town for quite some time now. And I'm touching on the garbage tax, if you want to use that term, and the tipping fee. And towns do implement this fee, especially when budgets are tight. There's probably, there's really probably not a lot of towns left that have a tip-free town, if they want to call it that. But my, my biggest concern as a hauler is we're looking for money, but you're pulling out $1 million. Pull out the $1.72 million in tipping if we're going to do it and make it a level playing field. Because essentially what's going to happen is the haulers are going to have to raise their fees because now we're paying the tonnage. And you're going to punish any resident who chooses to go and support a private business. And during COVID, that's what this has all been about, right? Supporting local businesses. So now those people are going to be punished if they choose to say with a, with a private hauler. We're punishing seniors. People with medical conditions, any elderly who can't get to the transfer station and exercise their right to a free dump. They're going to have to use a hauler who's going to have to increase their fees. And you're also punishing cluster housing. Cluster housing pay maintenance fees or HLA fees. Calling is built into that. So the hauler's going to raise the price, their HOA fees are going to go up, and going to the transfer station for free is going to do nothing for them. It's a moot point. They have to pay it regardless. The infrastructure at the transfer station barely handles what comes through there now. They do an excellent job. Jose at the Scout House is fantastic. I think George Estrada is a great asset to the town. Don't get me wrong. The town employees do a fantastic job. But they, they've got infrastructure in place, and I don't think it's going to work. We've already had somebody run over at the transfer station. Neighboring towns that people fall into the hopper or pit. And I understand you guys are the town passing the garbage tax on the town, onto the hauler. It's very common amongst towns, neighboring towns in particular, but residents can't cross that same scale for free. There's going to be a 2,500 home increase at, at minimum. People are all working from home now. A trip to the transfer station means nothing. And you know what? Two trips to the transfer station means nothing. I want to clean out my basin. I want to do this. What's stopping somebody from visiting that transfer station for free seven times a week? Every time a local hauler like Colonial, RWS, Chestnut Hill crosses that scale, we're bringing in 600 homes a time. That's one truck. They're running all that traffic. It's safer for the transfer stations. And, and again, what's the limit on how many free people are coming in? We're just going off of what it's been in the past. $700,000 has roughly been for people who go over the scale, residents who dump, and $1 million been haulers who bring the trash in. What's to say that 2,500 homes roughly doesn't turn into 8,500 homes? Now that estimation of the town plan on saving and passing other haulers is now diminished. And I understand there's grant money coming in to fix this transfer station, to widen the road, but it's not going to put a dent in what's needed. You're going to have 5,000 Trumbull cars coming through that transfer station. And ultimately, what it's going to lead to is increased transfer station hours because it's happened in a neighboring town who implemented this exact same system where the hauler paid and the resident didn't. They ended up having to get overtime, hire outside help in order to the transfer station open, in order to deal with the demand. The last couple of points are RWS, Colonial, Chestnut Hill, the local haulers, we limit you to one trash can for the most part. We pick up 82% of the households in the town, but we only bring in 65% of the trash at most, maybe 58% of the trash. So obviously, when you have nothing curbing how much you can throw away, you're going to throw away more. And now with all this actual insurance I have, the bond I have, the equipment investment I made, I get to wait in line with double the amount of cars in it. So I'm paying my drivers more while we wait for this huge influx that I don't think the town is prepared for, for cars. At the end of the day, it's a similar system. You share the transfer station with Easton and Monroe. Easton and Monroe, you pay every time you go over if you're a resident, or you pay a hauler. $365 a year if you take it yourself, $420 a year if you choose to have somebody pick it up at your house and provide a cart. It's a level playing field. This system just moves money around. We're taking $1 million out of the budget, and now we're making the haulers responsible for charging the taxpayer. I mean, if you guys really want to assess saving money, nobody likes to talk about it, but the bag leaf program saves money. We could do, you know, somebody could do a private company could do a third of the cost. The town doesn't have to maintain the equipment. They don't have to own the equipment. And there's a larger list of things that saves money. This is moving money around. And it becomes very difficult when the town I live in, love to live in and pay taxes in, becomes my number one competitor. RWS, Colonial, Chestnut Hill party can't compete with free, and that's what's happening. It's a charge versus free. And all we're asking for, if you're going to implement tonnage and not keep it the way it is, is to make a level playing field. Charge the residents like Monroe does and like Easton does. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Brea. Next, we're going to go to, I just lost Anthony. I'm sorry, I don't see him on the screen.
It looks like he may have left.
Okay. My next two speakers will be Jen Burke and then Mary Lena Corones.
Hi, I'm not sure why my sound just went out.
So just to clarify, when, when you're, when you're attending as an attendee, we have to bring you in as a panelist, and that's when the sound goes out. If there are any other residents who'd like to speak tonight, you may press the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen. And if you're on the phone, you can press star nine.
Thank you. I wanted to thank the Board of Finance for your service to the town and your consideration of the budget, which is specifically the education budget I want to address. I urge you to add the money to meet Dr. Semel's budget or at least adopt the First Selectman's proposed education budget in order to best meet the academic and most importantly, social emotional needs of our students right now and to best support the staff in schools. These budgets need to be funded. Dr. Semel has made it clear that there is no fat to be trimmed in his budget. I understand that there could be additional federal funding and/or budget surplus coming in. But unlike last year, I wish you to consider that additional money, bonus money that could be used for emergencies, needs related or unrelated to COVID, such as supplies, mental health support, staffing, things that we ran into this year and probably will run into in the next year. I did email and offered my personal phone number, and I'm happy to talk to anybody. And I urge you to continue talking to the staff in town to really hear how the, the budget cuts impact the schools inside and the teachers within the district and the students specifically, as you consider the approval of the budget. So thank you very much for your time.
Jen, can you just tell your address and your, just your name and address for Phyllis?
Sorry, Jennifer Burke, 40, High Ridge Road.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks.
Next, we're going to talk to Mary Lena Corones.
Good evening. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Lena.
How are you?
I'm good, thanks.
All of you, thank you all for your service. I'm speaking tonight as President of the Trumbull PTA Council, and I will be reading a statement on behalf of the Council's Executive Board. And my address for the record is 163 Whitney Avenue. "The Trumbull PTA Council believes strongly that education is not a line item. Education is an ideal. It is a living, breathing organism. It is our students, our teachers, our administrators, and our parents. Education is our community. As the Board of Finance plans and evaluates for next year's budget, we ask you to take a moment to consider viewing education in a similar manner. While the Council is pleased that an anticipated surplus and federal funding will help Trumbull Public Schools in the upcoming year, we think that it will not be possible or prudent to rely on these funding sources to create a long-term, sustainable educational system. In fact, doing so increases the risk of creating undesirable funding cliffs. We're at a moment in time when we need to strengthen our educational system and to help it rebuild. Therefore, the Council asks the Board of Finance to increase the Board of Ed budget above the recommendation made by the First Selectman. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you, Mary Lena. Next, we have Pam Flynn.
I am Pam Flynn. I live at 54 Peaceful Valley Road. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am a Trumbull teacher of 20 years and a parent of three children who have attended Trumbull Public Schools. My oldest is a freshman at Providence College, and my twins are sophomores at Trumbull High School. I am here today to give you a glimpse into what the budget cuts have done to our school and community. Our staff was demolished by the cuts this past year. We now have only two special education teachers to service our entire building. One teacher is grades K to 2 and the other 3 to 5. The K to 2 teacher has 19 students on her caseload. This may seem a manageable number on paper, but when she added up all of these 19 students' service hours, hours for decoding, math support, writing support, et cetera, it totaled 71.25 hours per week. You heard that right, 71.25. How is that possible for one person to meet these hours? It isn't. This doesn't even include the hours needed for testing newly identified students or students who have annual reviews. Our special teachers are having to combine grade levels, skip lunches, and preps just to meet these students' needs. It just saddens me so, as my own daughter was one of the lucky children who was identified in elementary school. Thanks to the support from her special education teachers through the years, she is now a successful high school sophomore. How can these students get the same successes with such limited staff? They can't. How about math and reading specialists? Did you know that they were cut too? We now share a math specialist with Frenchtown. She is amazing, but only at our building for two days a week. Our reading specialist is also fantastic, but is only one person instead of two. She services the entire building. This means she is only able to help the neediest of children. Anyone who might have been on the cusp and benefited from small group instruction to get them up to grade level is out of luck. No time, no help for them. How about our social worker? I know you've all read how the effects of COVID are going to be long-lasting on the youth's mental health. Did you know that we share our social worker with another school? She is not at Tashua every day. So this means any child that might be anxious or have concerns on a Friday or a Monday will have no one to talk to. Again, they're out of luck. And now on top of all these devastating cuts, we are being told our teacher voice on the Board of Education is in jeopardy of being cut as well. Enough is enough. We need more staff and support. Please, I ask you to put back what you've taken from the students of Trumbull. Restore our school system to the one I moved here for so that future generations can get the same quality of education that my own children have received. Thank you for addressing my concerns."
Thanks, Pam. I don't see any other hands among our attendees. If anybody else would like to speak, you're going to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and you'll be brought in as a panelist.
And just to reiterate, if you're on the phone, you may press star nine. And if you're watching on Zoom, press the Raise Your Hand button at the bottom of your screen.
I see Tony DiQuillo has his hand raised.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Good evening, Tony.
For the record, by the way, Lanny, I'm sorry. For the record, my name is Tony DiQuillo. I reside at 29 Valley View Road. I'm also a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I guess I haven't been following any of the budget discussions that closely because I'm busy doing planning and zoning work. But anyway, I found it interesting that we're finally getting to acknowledge the fact that everybody who uses the transfer station, whether by a hauler or when they bring garbage in, should be charged a fee that is based on the weight. I've been, I've been for the last 40 years, I've been in this town for 40 years, and I've been constantly trying to convince the politicians, the, the public officials to charge fees. I think it's the fairest way to do it, and you start to say, start to get significant amount of revenue. Second, I think we should stop collecting leaves. I remember one of the first people I spoke with when I first came here was Paul Colmeyer, and he went through a big discussion about how much money it costs us. At that time, it cost us maybe a half, a half a million dollars. But now it's up to maybe a million, maybe 2 million. I have no idea. Somebody should do an analysis, and we should stop collecting leaves. The town of Fairfield forces the residents to bag their leaves. Maybe we should just bag the leaves and seriously reduce the cost of this service. Next, I would recommend that we remove, we stop removing snow from sidewalks adjacent to residential, commercial, and industrial buildings. Just lately, we were able to convince the multi-housing unit next to the mall to maintain their sidewalks that includes physically maintaining it, but also removing the snow. If we can do that, the Planning and Zoning did that. If we can do that, then the politicians should also make it a requirement that everybody who has a sidewalk in front of their house, remove the snow. I haven't done any analysis as to what the estimated cost is. It's probably that not much. It could be a couple of hundred thousand dollars because at this time, I think we had 27 miles of sidewalks in this town. It takes time to clean those sidewalks. We should have the, just like the town of Fairfield, the town of Fairfield forces their, their residents to remove their own snow. Why don't we do that? What, again, I think it's important that we start to look for cost savings. And I, 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 again, I was somewhat shocked that we finally recognized that we should be charging the, the haulers who bring in residential garbage fee, which I find very interesting. Thank you, Lanny. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tony.
Nice evening.
Are there any, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I see a Vivian. If anyone else wishes to speak after Vivian, if you'd kindly raise your hand so that we can keep the queue moving. Hi, Vivian, would you state your name and address, please?
Oh, my name, well, Vivian, my daughter, my name is Janet Evans Scanlon, and I'm at 9 Brookside Drive.
Go ahead, Janet.
We moved here at the end of July last year specifically for the schools. We had heard about Trumbull's schools. We wanted to get into a great school district, and we found Daniel's Farm, and we were extremely excited. My daughter was approved for special services, which she is getting in math and reading. And we were dismayed to find out that she couldn't get as many special services as she needed because of the budget cuts, that we were sharing some of her teachers, her math teacher, that her reading teacher is being stretched beyond her limit. We need help. We need, we need to invest money in these teachers and get our staff back up to par so that our children can get the services that they deserve. I think that their teachers are doing fantastic, but I think they're being stretched way past their limits. And from what I've seen from Daniel's Farm, it's an incredible school. And I think with more in the budget for the special education teachers, it's just going to be a knock out of the park. So I hope that you invest in the schools and in the special education teachers and put it up to where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else wish to speak this evening? We'll wait just another minute. Okay, I don't see any other hands currently. Please know that we are listening, and we do have, oh, hold on. Tony DiQuillo? Tony, you already took three minutes, twice. Where are you? Tony, did you have something else you wanted to say? You're on mute, Tony.
This forensic study that has been proposed to do about this mismanagement of the funds that the Board of Education uses, I fully support it. However, there was a lot of, I remember attending one of the meetings, and everybody says, well, we can't point fingers to anybody. And I think what we have to do is define who is responsible, who is accountable for this mismanagement. who is accountable for this mismanagement. And we need to identify the root cause, not a contributing cause, but a root cause. And the way you find a root cause of the problem is to ask the question why five times. And then we could come up with a permanent and irreversible corrective action.
Tony.
You don't want to repeat this.
Tony, may I interrupt for you just for a second? Tonight, we're discussing the budget proposal. That's not part of our budget proposal.
Why shouldn't it?
I do, I do hear you. It is something that is being talked about by the Council. It's not under the purview of the Board of Finance. There is also quite a lengthy document on the Board of Education website that shows how they're answering the operational review. So if you wanted to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak about the current budget proposal in front of us? We are listening. Well, I see MT just popped up. MT, are you there?
Hello.
Hi. Can you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Monica Terry, 153 North Stowe Place. I am asking that the Board, first and foremost, thank you to the Board of Finance and to the Board of Education for volunteering the countless of hours that you put forward to this town. I'm asking that you vote in favor of Dr. Semel's budget. He has taken on a daunting task of not only leading this town in terms of education, but also the operational review. I think he has been very forthcoming and honest regarding the budget in every single line. Him and his team have put together countless of hours in which everybody in the town should be able to understand the budget and where all the dollars are going. I just ask that you take that into consideration. He took over a very challenging year and he's doing the best he can and he's not even asking for 4%. Thank you.
Thank you Monica. Frank Squicchimaro?
Hello, Frank Squicchimaro, 15 Echo Hill Road, Trumbull, Connecticut. Thank you for your time and service. I just jumped off the Board of Ed meeting. See, they get, they get me yelling at them every, all year round. You guys only get a month. Talking about the Board of Ed budget, I'd like to reiterate what I said the other day. Please fund the, above the First Selectman's ask, the superintendent's ask, let's not kick this can down the road any further. So we have to keep having the same discussion every year. Now, I keep hearing that the Board of Finance at this point can do three things. They can adopt the First Selectman's budget. They can cut the First Election budget. And I keep hearing they can add to it. I haven't seen that. And we'd love to see that one year. Hopefully, it's this year and we can stop kicking this can down the road. We are going to get surplus and government funds and they will help cover that food services debt. Maybe after that, we'll be at an even line and we'll be able to have more reasonable requests going down the road. But we kick this can further, the number is just going to keep rising like it has been the past decade. Now, I know some of you have been on this side of the screen or, you know, the table in the past, asking for the same thing. I see their memories coming up where in 2014, they're asking the Board of Finance, hopefully they submit the budget. If something doesn't work and we keep doing it the same way, doesn't it make sense to make a change and look forward? So please consider that. And also, the operational review was great. It pointed out the deficiencies we have. And when you ask to correct these deficiencies, that takes funds. So that's why the superintendent's request should be fulfilled to meet these deficiencies and get this education system back moving forward where we all love it to be for our kids and our community, to keep our property values up. Without our education system, we don't have a lot bigger houses for less money. And none of us want that, especially since we already own our houses. Then we want them to keep their value. And, you know, when you go on Realtor.com, one of the only things you see is school ratings. And without this support of math and reading specialists, our test scores will be going down in a normal year, not in a COVID year, where the slide is going to be greater for our kids, socially, emotionally and educationally. So please, once again, I ask you to fund the superintendent's request, or the Board of Ed's request, but I'm going with the superintendent because I trust him a lot more right now. Thank you.
Next, we have Tom M.
Hi, sorry. My husband's phone, Anne Martyrana, 34 Claryon Place.
Can you just spell your last name for me?
Yes, M A R T O R A N A.
Thank you.
Sure, I'm in the middle of bedtime, very impromptu, but I just wanted to give my two cents here that I have.
I feel a little over the shoulder.
We moved here from Stratford, like about four years ago. And my daughter was in first grade. She was immediately identified in Stratford. She received no extra help, no support, nothing. We thought every, as soon as we got to Daniel's Farm School, she was immediately identified as someone, as a child who would benefit from reading intervention services. And she received a half hour of reading support from Amy Pennella, every single day, a reading consultant. Unfortunately, due to cuts, recent cuts, she's now, I mean, not completely unfortunate, she's back in the classroom as a kindergarten teacher. But, you know, the services she had provided to Alyssa as a reading consultant were very, very beneficial. She is now reading at and above grade level. Early intervention is so important. I now have a kindergartner who you see bouncing in here. She also has been put into reading intervention, but she's not going to receive the same services that my older daughter did because of the cuts, previous cuts to the budget. So really like to see those kinds of supports added back to the schools. And as a classroom teacher, I teach third grade in another district. Class size is so important, especially in the elementary level where we're trying to really target individual skills and individualizing education for children, for young children. Things that we didn't do 17 years ago when I started, it was more, it's still the whole group method of teaching, not as much small group instruction. And so the larger class sizes that are happening last year, it's just not possible to do that. And with the COVID measures, everyone is separated three feet across the room. It takes up the whole entire classroom. You can't even pull a small group and work and give that direct instruction to children. Class size is so important. It takes money to have good teachers and enough teachers and enough support staff. So please, you know, keep all of that in mind. Thank you.
Thanks Anne, have fun with bedtime. John Pazinski?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. 27 Mallett Drive, for the record. I would just like to request that we fully fund Dr. Semel's budget. This is the time to step up for our children, especially with everything that's going on. And I know there are hundreds of parents who feel the same as I do. And as a Tashawa and Madison parent, I just wanted to add my name to the list of people advocating for this. Thank you.
Thanks John. I see Ellie. And then Veronica Lenzen.
I'm so sorry, this is Ellie Grosso. Did you call on me?
Ellie, how are you?
Fine. For some reason, it logged out, logged me back in. Am I?
Because you had to be pulled in as a panelist to speak.
Okay, so, but I didn't hear you call on me, but you did call on me, correct?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ellie Grosso, go ahead.
Ellie Grosso, G R O S S O, 24 Indian Road. I have three children currently attending school in Trumbull Public Schools, Frenchtown, Madison and a freshman in high school. I am also speaking on an impromptu basis just to voice my support to fully fund Dr. Semel's budget. Reiterating what the previous speaker and all the previous speakers have said, now is the time. There is, we cannot falter in our commitment to the children of our town. And if we are speaking out of pure self-interest, the real estate, people move here for the education. So we need to always keep that in mind. I ask that the Board of Education's budget is fully funded. Thank you so much.
Thanks Ellie, always good to hear from you. Next, we have Veronica Lenzen. Honey neighbor.
Hi, do you really need my address?
Veronica Lenzen, 129 Fresh Meadow Drive.
Nice job. So I am speaking tonight, my goodness, I think the last time I spoke at a meeting was back when we were pushing for full day kindergarten. I have one child who did not get that benefit and I have one child who did. Both of them are doing amazing in Trumbull Public Schools. I'm a mom of a Madison middle schooler and a mom of a Trumbull High freshman. And I'm really just speaking here tonight to ask the Board of Finance to go ahead and approve and look forward to Dr. Semel's budget request so that we can really look at what our students need. As a special educator and as a special administrator in another town, I know that the COVID impact that we're going to be experiencing and trying to intervene to help our students get back to where they need to be, despite all the efforts of the teachers. They've done everything they can, but being out of school and home and living through a pandemic is going to affect all of our students, whether they're gen ed, special ed, gifted, it doesn't matter. They're all behind and they're all behind by a year. And we're going to see the studies, we're going to see it all come to fruition and we're going to need smaller class sizes. We're going to need well-trained and well-paid teachers and well-trained and well-paid related service providers. Social emotional learning is going to be more important than ever. We can't do it unless we have a fully funded budget that allows for all of our staff to be able to come to work every day and do what they need to do. Probably the shortest comment I've ever given, but that's what I'm asking for. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks Veronica. Anyone else wish to speak? If you can use the raise your hand feature, I see Kathleen Hofer.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Hofer, 29 Lindley Road. And I am speaking impromptu as well, but I would like to ask that the Board of Finance support the education budget that Dr. Semel presented. I think support services, in fact, I know as an educator myself, that support services are more critical than ever and we need to work to restore all of those staff that we've been cutting so that students get the services that they deserve and are entitled to. And I have a child at the middle school and the high school and I know firsthand the impact that this has had on them as students as well as the teachers who work with them. And teachers need to be supported with their professional learning and all of those things that the last year's budget ended up cutting out and not providing both students and staff with. So again, I just ask that the Board consider fully supporting the education budget. Thank you.
Thank you Kathleen. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? I want to thank everyone who took the time this evening to make comments regarding the budget for whatever aspect of the budget was important to them. I do want to remind people that the Board of Finance and the Town Council do not have line item control over what is, what the Board of Education and Dr. Semel choose to use their money for, for individual things such as specialists. It will be important that you stay active in the process and advocate for those things you feel are most important at the end of the day when we, when the town does give an allocation to the Board of Education. Thank you again for joining us. If anyone else has further comments, you can email them to the Board of Finance through our clerk, P. Collier, C.O.L.L.I.E.R. at trumbell-ct.gov or directly to me, Laney McQ at gmail.com. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.